Here.
Matt.
Here.
Dwayne.
Here.
David.
Here.
Karen, Katherine.
If I could have everybody stand for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. Thank you. Inspire Public Schools, a community of learners committed to make the world a better place. Mission is to learn, share, innovate, and inspire. Priorities are: one, personalized learning and the pursuit of academic excellence; two, inspire students and staff to develop their character, show their talents, and apply their learning; and three, maintain excellence in resource management. Any changes to the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Motion is made in segments to approve the agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Agenda is approved unanimously. Next, we have the Truth in Taxation fiscal year 25 revised budget and final 2025 payable levy.
Good evening. I'm here tonight to go to review your Truth in Taxation. This is required by law to have this and then the board will need to approve a final levy tonight. We do need to talk about these things on the agenda, the levy cycle, basic school funding, any factors contributing to the change in the levy, the levy certification itself, graphical analysis, and a revised budget. In the levy process, we saw this in September when I presented the preliminary levy, but for anybody who hasn't seen this, we certify the levy now. It's collected in the calendar year of '25, and the school district uses these funds for the FY '26 school year. So even though they're collected throughout the whole calendar year '25, the money is used for the '25-'26 school year. So a school tax levy must be either set by state formula, so the legislature decides, or it's voter-approved. Some factors that... Some factors impacting the tax change are anything that's driven by the state level. SOF legislators determine any changes in the levy for the state formula, changes in sales ratios impacting our adjusted net tax capacity, and that just means maybe they'll change a property from being residential to commercial, and that would change your impact to your levy, to the whole, as a whole. And any laws mandating code compliance. And then those issues determined by district voters, so if there's a bond referendum, a levy, or a tech levy, which is also called the capital projects levy, or any voter-approved excess levy referendum. So bond is for buildings, levy is for additional revenue for the district, and then capital projects is normally a tech levy. So those are all voter-approved things that have to go to the voters, otherwise the district cannot levy for those. And then any local factors that do affect, and we'll see later on in some of the graphs, how much your district has changed over the years, some inflationary pressures on real estate market, any abatements, property improvements not previously taxed will adjust your levy, changes in assessed market value or classifications. So what is included in the school district levy? All of those things we just talked about, the voter-approved referendums, the only thing that this district has at this time are bonds for the buildings. There is not a referendum, an operating referendum, nor is there a tech levy in this district. Those levies are set by state formula, the equity, and when I talk about equity, that doesn't mean DEI, it means equity between school districts and make sure funding is the same between school districts. Operating capital, there's some transition revenue that we get because of old laws, and so we get some money, very small amount of money for that, community service, and long-term facility maintenance. And then those are other levies authorized by the state based on our local needs, so reemployment, safe schools revenue, achievement integration, current tech, any facility leases that we have, integration in QCOM, of which this district does not have QCOM either. So some factors contributing to the levy change, and it really affects your property owners, their adjusted net tax capacity was an 11.4% increase from '22 to '23. The referendum market value, same, it went up 12.2%. And we did have a reduction in pupil units, so 11 students less, so we levy less. So when you see a reduction, we levy less, and we actually receive less revenue. So just so that you understand that. So that would be for the FY '26 year when we're talking about that. The adjusted net tax capacity analysis, I found this very interesting because if you look at, it's really over 10 or 11 years, you've more than doubled your adjusted net tax capacity. So that means the property values for the school district have more than doubled over 10 years, and that's quite a bit. So definitely people are not seeing big increases in their, especially like we have a 6%, the district will approve tonight a 6% increase in your levy, but when you spread, when there's been an increase of over 12%, most people are going to see a decrease in their school portion of the levy unless they have big increases in their personal property value. Does that make sense? So valuations are going up way over what you're seeing as the district increase in the levy. And the same thing works for the referendum market value, and it's increasing the same doubling over the years. Our enrollment trends, you can see, have been growing until this last year. We were actually down six students, and when we're budgeting for the current year, we're down 11 from previous year. So when you're down students, you lose revenue, both state aid and levy, because those factors are based on formulas, those formulas are usually based on student population. So you're losing revenue when you're declining enrollment. This is very detailed levy information. I presented this at the preliminary. You can see that you aren't showing any operating referendum or adjustments because you don't have one. You can see there's some money there in equity. None of this has really changed since the preliminary levy, so I'm not going to go through all of it unless you really request me to. The one thing that has changed at the very bottom, the prior year adjustments, that was negative at the preliminary levy, and now it is a positive. So between now and then, the state made adjustments when they were reviewing things, and so they actually are showing the positive adjustment for prior year. And that's usually prior year, because you can't get it exactly perfect when you're levying, it's based on student enrollment. And we don't know what that student enrollment will be for FY '26 yet, and so you're always estimating. So those prior year adjustments are just based on that enrollment difference over those prior years. And same with community and debt service, those really haven't changed since the preliminary levy, and so there's very little change in those areas as well. You can see your biggest part of your debt service is really your biggest piece of that, voter-approved. All of this in the debt service would be voter-approved levy. And then your levy summary is just the summary of the general, community service, and debt service. You can see those increases from prior year in the general fund. Last year it was 2.9 million, you're at almost 2.2 million this year. Community service went up a little bit, $30,000. Debt services, a couple hundred thousand dollars. So overall, you went from 8.687 million to 9.215 million, so it's a 6.07% increase over the prior year. And again, most people will not see an increase in their school portion. They may see an increase based on other levying organizations, but it won't be most likely from the school. If you go to the levy history, you can see where you had voter-approved items. When you voted for the bond referendums, those were big increases those years, but the other years, they were mainly in that less than 5% or around 5%. The budget process, we also are in this December, January, where we're talking about the Truth in Taxation at the bottom of the screen there. Mid-year budget adjustments, so you're going to see a budget adjustment tonight, a revised general fund budget only. We're going to bring that to the board, so we have something really good and solid to move forward in this district with for the future. This should look somewhat familiar to you. This is what you approved in the gold, the FY '25 adopted budget. That's what you approved in June. And so what I'm showing you in the red is the revised. It's based on the same pupil units. Beginning fund balance is the actual fund balance from what you're going to hear later on tonight from the audit. So we're taking those actuals and we're putting them in there for FY '24, and you're going to see those are the real numbers when we go through that audit. So you can see that we have a very small fund balance. We actually, after revising the budget and making all the changes, we're pretty much at a balanced budget. It's really caused by one major error in the expenditure budget. And so once you took that out and made some adjustments to the revenue and corrected those errors, you're actually at a pretty close to a balanced budget, you're negative $54,000 for next year, for the current year. I said next year, but sorry, it's for this current year. So we've been, I went through every line item of your budget and revised. You didn't have an original budget. You approved one, but there was nothing in the SMART systems. No one ever entered anything in, so I had nothing to go by to decide what those were, so I actually had to start from ground zero. I recreated an original budget, so that went into your, tried to recreate that the best I could. At the same time, I recreated your revised budget, or created one. And so that's what you're seeing tonight, is what I've done through all the work for the last couple months, going through every line item on your budget. We've been monitoring it, we know exactly where we're at with that budget. Dr. Newret can look at the budget now and say, we're this much percent through the year, and this is what we spent in these categories, you can go down the line and you can see all of those. It's pretty easy to follow at this point. And so I don't know what more to say about that. We're pretty much a balanced budget. It will be helpful going forward for the district, knowing they don't have to make additional budget cuts over the 1.6 million. You're just, you're still only at less than 1% fund dollars predicted at the end of this year. One of the things that I do when I am predicting a budget is I'm pretty conservative in your revenues. So if we think we're going to get enrollment, you know, fees and student fees of $300,000, we may only be budgeting 280, because we don't know if our basketball teams are as good as they used to be, or our football teams are as good as they used to be, and all of that depends. So pretty conservative in our revenue budgets. And when it comes to our expense budget, we put everything in there that we know we could possibly expend. So we're, should be the opposite, you know? So hopefully we'll come in under revenue, and, or we'll come in over revenues and under expenses. So actually, it could come out better than what I'm predicting, but you're at the max in there for both. If you look at the revenue by source in the graphicals, you can see I put the numbers out there, the levy, the local revenue, state aids and grants, special ed. And I separated special ed out of your state aids and grants because it's a big driver sometimes in what we receive in funding. That is a piece that we are receiving additional revenue over what your adopted budget was. You're seeing additional revenue in special ed because there's something called ADSS, and so that's part of special ed. It helps to keep, we have a program that helps keep students out of our special ed program, so it's an intervention program. We actually hurt us in FY '24 because we had the expense, but we wouldn't get the revenue for this year until this year, and so that revenue was never accounted for in this year's budget, in the adopted budget. So I accounted for that revenue in here. The other piece that wasn't in here was we received another $100,000 in Title I funding that you didn't know about, and no one would have known about as part of the adopted budget. So that is in here as well. And then there were a few other pieces of the budget and the revenue that were in years, so I added those. If you look at the revised budget, this is by, we call it program series, but you can see it's by district administration, support services, regular instruction, special ed instruction. And you can see our regular instruction is 52% of the budget, special ed is 15%, and other pieces, but those are your majority of your budget, is the regular instruction and special ed, and then all the other smaller pieces of the budget. I did a comparison of the program series, the same thing as the previous slide, but for the last three years. And so that orange line in the middle is the big increases that you saw in every category for last year. So those really big increases, and then you can see the FY '25 budget is the blue, and so you can see it coming down because of the reductions that you made last year for this year's budget. So all of those numbers are out there as well, the actuals, and then what we predicted for the budget this year. This does, looks at it a little bit differently, but the number, total number is the same. This looks at it by wages and salaries, benefits, purchase services, supplies, and materials. We added the debt service in here for the borrowing of the money for cash flow purposes, so that expense of $88,000 is out here where you didn't have anything before. So you can see where those, the majority is wages and benefits for all of the state. You're a service organization, and when you're a service organization, it's people that drive your expenses. And then I did the same thing here, a three-year comparison by object series, and you can again see the orange is last year's actual expenses, and you can see the blue is 25 budget, and then where you were in FY '23 actual, and all the numbers out there. You can see the growth in those areas by year. And then this kind of goes back to the same slide that I had before. You can see what that is again. Any questions? I went through that very quickly, but I wanted you to see it. If you want detail, it's out there now, it's all available for you. It's been interesting to go through a whole budget like that and recreate it and try to then do a revised budget at the same time. But hopefully, we caught most of the errors and issues in there, and I feel pretty confident about this budget.
I'd say we appreciate your time. This definitely was not easy. Any questions from the board? Thank you. All right. I didn't have any public comment cards. Were there any that I missed? Just ask any audience. Okay. No public comments, moving on, reports. Audit presentation.
Yes, so we have Andrew Filletti here from Smith Schaefer. And Andrew, you want to set that table there?
Sure.
And it won't make you stand during your whole presentation, so you can have a seat there.
All right. Thanks for having me tonight. I'm Andrew Filletti of Smith Schaefer, and we are contracted for an audit for our school district for the year ended June 3, 2024. I did also hand out the actual audited financial statement to the board members, but tonight we will look at this PowerPoint. Everything in the audited financial statement gets taken out and put into the PowerPoint, so if there's any questions on where the numbers come from, you can jump back into the audit to see where you're at with that. So on the second slide there, we start with our audit summary. Our audit opinion is a clean, unmodified opinion, which means we believe everything is really stated according to GAAP, which is the highest level of assurance you can receive on a financial statement. We did sit down with management and some of the accounting staff on November 26 and went through the financial statement in more line-by-line detail. Tonight, we took kind of the highlights out of those and put them into this PowerPoint review. Our audit opinion provides a reasonable, not absolute assurance that the financials are free from material on the statement is not absolute assurance, as we do not look at every single transaction that occurs throughout the year. We take a risk-based approach and make selections based off of the perceived risk. Also included in that audit, we have to provide a letter on Minnesota legal compliance. We have one compliance finding related to insufficient collateral for coverages, so when you have funds held by banks, they need to have pledged collateral in excess of FDIC insurance limits of about 250, and then 110,000 on top of that. So the one bank did not have sufficient collateral, and I believe there is a resolution working on with the bank to get that rectified, so you will have adequate collateral going forward. There is also included in our audit is the letter on internal control. We have four findings related to internal controls. The first one there was improper controls over cash dispersments. During our testing of dispersments, we did hit some federal dollars for title. That means you have to follow up compliance matrix, and there's various testing. We found some where federal dollars were not for allowable purposes or had proper documentation. In total, they were about less than $4,000, so not a big amount for those federal dollars that we did find in our testing related to that. The second finding there is a segregation of upcoming duties, which is very common in most smaller, or most districts, just making sure you can properly segregate the different functions of the cash, custody of the cash and recording responsibilities. The third one there is another very common finding that we have in our financial statements. It's the oversight of the financial reporting process. So the accounting standards actually require that the school district or the audit committee prepares their own financial statement with all required disclosures. You had relied on us providing that financial statement for you, so it is a very common finding that we do have. And then some material audit adjustments as we did help close some of our audit books, making sure all entries into your accounting system for you. And then the student activity compliance, there was one finding related to assigned statement of purpose, so every activity that has activity needs to have an assigned statement of purpose, so you've had them for all except for one, which isn't counted as well. And then the audit committee letter I did hand out to you as well, just takes reference to estimates such as depreciation, entitlement to liability, special ed, and general ed. Those are some of the numbers that are not finalized until after the audit. Next, we look at your average daily membership, just as you guys got to hear about how much of that derives your revenues. I don't want to spend too much time on that, but your total adjusted average daily membership was 2,326 students from FY '23 to '24, or 1.5% over the seven years presented in your year of over 700 students. Next, we look at your revenues across all the funds, so total revenues there about $38,100,000, that's up about $2.5 million, or a little over 7% of revenues, broken out into the four main categories there. The first grouping there is your property taxes. Property taxes was up about $400,000 in total revenues collected. The largest portion of your funding, as mentioned earlier, comes from state aids. Over $25 million comes in through state aids, that's up about $3.2 million from the prior year. The largest increase there is due to your additional student numbers and the formula increase, so increase in general education due to the average daily membership was about $800,000, your special education was up about $500,000, excuse me, general is up about $800,000, special ed up $500,000. And then the debt service also gets some aid credits related to that, so that debt service aid credit and other sources coming from the debt service credits was up about $600,000. And then the other large change in the state source was the food service has everybody provided free meals, so that brought in about, for if you are a part of that program, it brought in about $700,000 in additional state sources on revenue. Third grouping there is your state, or federal aids, about $691,000, so you are below that $750,000, so there was no single audit required in that current year. And then the far right grouping, about $3.6 million brought in in the other category. Most of that is going to be down about $800,000 from the prior year as those food sales, there were now free meals, so the food sale was down about $200,000. And then prior year had larger balances in cash due to the bond proceeds for the building projects, so the investment income was down about $500,000. As we continue to go on there, a different way of looking at how the school was funded. The 2024 school year on the left, about 68% of your total revenue coming in is from the state sources. Property taxes, about 21%, so pretty consistent between the '24 and '23 school year. Slide six, then we get into your property tax levy history. So the second from the right is the one that funded the '24 school year, the one on the far right is funding the current FY '25 school year. So we do see that increase in the bottom, which is going to be your general operating that comes into the general fund, so we saw the increase of revenues, about $400,000 coming in into the general fund, a little increase in your orange in the community service, and then FY '25 is a slight decrease of this funding for the current year. That will bring us into the expenditures, just for the general fund going across there, the different categories that you guys looked at, our year, your Truth in Taxation there. We have a few more years presented here. You can see the largest expenditure or cost for the school is in the third group in there, which is your regular instruction, that is the amount that goes into funding the teachers and then getting your students, so that increase is about $1.7 million in the current year. Most of that increase was related to, salaries was up about $620,000, health insurance was another large increase in the current year, that was up about $385,000 just in the regular instruction category. We did see a little bit higher in the regular instruction of RCTC tuition, so that was up about $120,000, was an additional expenditure for the school district, and then some additional athletic fees for services that was up about $120,000. The fifth group in there is your special ed, which was another large increase for the current year, that was up about $905,000. Again, that was related to salaries being up about $520,000, and then benefits up about $190,000. So the total expenditures in the general fund that across there was $29,695,000, up about $3.7 million from prior year, about 14% of that increase, a little over $2.7 million that was related to salaries and benefits per year, a larger portion of your budget did come over. So the budget was about $27 million, spent about $2.2 million over budget, and again, as mentioned earlier, a majority of that was based on salaries and benefits being over budget in those categories. We just look at the general fund. The blue is going to be the revenues, the yellow is the expenditures, so total revenues are up about $1.8 million in the current year, as I mentioned, general education, maybe up about $800,000, some compensatory aid, about $120,000, special ed up $500,000, and then $400,000 in additional property taxes coming in. Your expenditures are up about $3.7 million, about $1.5 million for salaries, $1.1 million for benefits. There was the bus lease purchase in there for a little over $100,000 as well. Other increases for payments to other districts, including RCTC, payments to other agencies was up about $380,000, as we did see some higher costs really looking at. And then on the far right is going to be your change in fund balance in the green, so there was a deficit in the current year, it was about $1,750,000. So we did use that fund balance, so if we look at the next slide, we look at where our fund balances are. The blue is going to be the unassigned amounts, so that's the amounts that are available without restrictions that the district can spend. They did go to a deficit of about $22,000 in the current year, down a little over $2,050,000 in the current year. The yellow is going to be your restricted fund balances that we have on the next slide, so we'll tackle up those in a second. Assigned fund balances are going to be for student activities, and then some non-spendable funds on the far right in the green. So one metric that is determined to use the health of the district is if you take your unassigned fund balance and divide it by your current year expenditures, a bit of percentage of how much of your reserves are on hand, you're at a negative 0.08% in the current year. Your policy is right around that 8%, so you're about 7.8% in the FY '23, right at 8% in '22, so we did see that. in the current year. Slide ten then is your restricted fund balances. So the largest one there is going to be on the far right, which is your LTFM, so that is in a deficit as some of those funds were spent and you're slowly getting repaid back on that. It's a deficit of just around nine-hundred-thousand in your LTFM. Scholarships has a little over two-hundred-thousands set aside with some other smaller ones in those other categories. Food service on slide eleven. So we see all the increase in the blue in your revenues, up about four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand. Most of that is due to the state sources being up seven-hundred-thousand and then the decrease in the regular food sales. Expenditures were up about two-hundred-and-eleven-thousand, meal serves, so they did operate in excess of about ninety-two-thousand, so your food service is in good shape. And they have a fund balance on the next slide of about two-hundred-and-seventy-thousand. So they have a good position in the food service fund, community service. And then on the next slide there, slide thirteen, you have your revenues in the blue, were up about a hundred-and-eighty-thousand, up about seventy-thousand from project kids and some more tuition charges of about eighty-thousand. Expenditures were up three-hundred-thousand, two-hundred-thousand of its salaries, salaries, and seventy-thousand is benefits. So that's the majority of the increase in your expenditures there. And then had still operated in excess, sort of positive fund balance added about thirty-thousand to their fund balance. On the next slide, we can look at your community service fund balance. The blue is going to be the regular community service fund balance of about eight-thousand dollars. The yellow is going to be made up of three different categories, school readiness, which is a deficit of about seventy-three-thousand, community education has about eighty-three-thousand, and then the UCFD has about a hundred-and-ninety-five-thousand set aside. Debt service fund balance on the next slide, total set aside for debt service of a million-one-hundred-eight-thousand to pay for future principal and interest payments on your bonds that are outstanding. In the current year, the district did refund one of the bonds, and it did have actual future cash savings of about seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand with a present value savings of six-hundred-and-sixty-two-thousand. So that did save the district some money with three of them in that bond tied a little bit interest. The five-year debt service requirements, the principal in the blue, interest in the green, so just around that six-hundred-thousand the next kind of five years, it jumps up in twenty-twenty-six a little bit, stays pretty consistent, right around that six-hundred-thousand the next five years.
Six million?
Sorry.
Six million.
Did I say six-hundred?
Yeah.
Sorry. Six million. Sorry. And the next slide then, on slide seventeen, is your average daily membership. We look at this again because these next slides are going to be two-thousand-three-hundred-and-twenty-eight and divided by the different expenditure categories to get a per ADM cost for funding the different areas or various functions of the school district. So a first comparison that we're going to look at is the district and school administration and support services. So spending a little over eleven-hundred dollars per ADM on the district and school administration. Districts in the gray color there is going to be district with two-thousand, the four-thousand students, and then the state average on the far right in the yellow. Those are both comparisons to the twenty-twenty-three's of the latest available information to us. So you are right at districts of the similar size, slightly under both of those categories there. So the district does a good job in allocating those costs. And then on the next slide is your regular instruction, so you spend about sixty-two, sixty-three-hundred dollars per ADM. Again, you're right at the districts of similar size within two dollars of that spending amount, and then below the state average. One last comparison there is the general fund cost per ADM. Spend a little over twelve-thousand-seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars per ADM, under the districts of similar size of the fourteen-thousand and under the state average of fifteen-thousand-six-thirty-six. So then we have a brief summary here at the end. So the general fund expenditures exceeded revenues and other financing sources by a million-seven-hundred-and-fifty-three-thousand, decreasing the total general fund balance to a hundred-and-twenty-four-thousand. The UFR's general fund unassigned fund balance is a deficit of about twenty-two-thousand, or point-zero-eight percent of the current year expenditures. And then the assigned fund balance set aside for student activities is about two-hundred-and-seventy-eight-thousand. The food service revenues exceeded expenditures by about ninety-two-thousand, increasing the food service fund balance to two-hundred-and-seventy-thousand. And then the community service fund revenues exceeded expenditures by about thirty-thousand, and they have two-hundred-and-thirteen-thousand set aside. And then the building construction fund expenditures exceeded revenues of about seventeen-million as they're spending down the bond proceeds and completing the construction projects, spending down the bonds that were issued in twenty-twenty-two. Through a lot of numbers that are pretty critical, is there any questions?
Am I interpreting this correctly on slide twenty, that we're spending approximately two-thousand less per pupil than school districts that are our approximate size? That twelve-seven-fifty-six versus fourteen-six-thirty-one?
Yes.
Two-thousand dollars less?
Okay.
Any other questions from board? Thank you, sir. Up next, we have a superintendent's report.
Yes, so it is December. First of all, I want to congratulate all the many great performances that our students have had in November and December. It's performance season, so our actors, our musicians, all the great concerts that we've had, middle school level, high school level, band, player, plays, it's been awesome, being able to see them in, and some of them are new facilities, and they sounded great, so thank you very much to those. And it's great for, not only for our students, but also for our community to be a part of that. Also, thank you to students and staff. In the buzz the last few weeks, I've been pointing out all the different things that our kids are doing in collecting toys, collecting food, doing all the things, just understanding their real effect in the community and the things that they can do. Sometimes they only understand their world and they only see their world, so it's great that they can go out, collect these things, go shopping at Target, and then be able to hand them out to people who have the need in our community. So we do that. Many of our schools, many of our programs do that, so thank you, and I know the community appreciates that. This time I also want to thank Julie Sink. This is her last week with us as interim finance director. She came at the end of August, and as you heard, she's gone line by line for not only FY twenty-four last year, but also FY twenty-five. I know that's taken a long time, but that's the reason why we did it, so that we make sure that we have the verified and true numbers moving forward, so we're not guessing and not being able to plan right. So I know a lot of that's kind of went against people's patience, and people really wanted to know, but it also, I think, challenged her patience at times in the office, and you know, she does drive down a couple hours' drive, and she was here Mondays and Tuesdays and virtuals most Wednesdays and then even beyond. And so we are in a much better spot because of Julie, and I want to thank you. And she's here yet tomorrow and will be helping us out. And Dan Payan, who has already been with us for a couple weeks, is, they know each other, and he has Julie's number and so do I. So I'm sure we can reach out when we have questions, but they're already transitioning very well, and Dan stepping right in and being able to take over. So again, I really want to thank Julie. I think when she, it was a cold call, and she answered, and she said, yes, I'll be there. And then she's put in a lot of work, probably more than what she maybe expected, but we really appreciate where she's got us to, and you've made her in a better place at this point, so thank you very much. Appreciate it. Enrollment update, right now, we are at, let me see if I can move it over here.
Here on twenty-five.
I'm not here, so, let's go. You added that one. We are at twenty-three-seventeen at this point, so we're holding steady right around between twenty-three-sixteen, twenty-three-twenty, and that's where we want to make sure that we're staying and we're not dropping and so forth. Now remember, we'll start looking at the next year and at the second January meeting, when we look at, that's when we will accept the first round of open enrolled students for next year and so forth, and we'll start working with Dan on projecting enrollments then for next year and looking if we have to revise anything as we move forward into the adopted budget. But we'll be looking at enrollments, but it's holding steady right now, which is good. Any questions on my report?
Thank you, Mike.
Yeah?
And Lady Julie. Next, there is no over unfinished business, so on new business, action on resolution levy payable twenty-twenty-five.
So from what you heard from Julie tonight, now we need to approve the school tax levy from her information, so. Can I read it? Do you want to, do you want to?
Whereas pursuant to Minnesota statutes, the school board of Byron School District, Byron, Minnesota, is authorized to make the following proposed tax levies for general purposes. Maintenance general fund includes the referendum of three-million-one-hundred-and-ninety-one-thousand-three-hundred-and-forty-four dollars and four cents. Community service, one-hundred-and-fifty-seven-thousand-eight-hundred-and-twenty-three dollars. And debt service, five-million-eight-hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand-nine-hundred-and-seventy-seven dollars and twenty-two cents for a total proposed school tax levy of nine-million-two-hundred-and-fifteen-thousand-one-hundred-and-forty-four dollars and twenty-six cents. Now therefore be resolved by the school board of Byron School District, Byron, Minnesota, that the levy to be levied in twenty-twenty-four to be collected in twenty-twenty-five is set at nine-million-two-hundred-and-fifteen-thousand-one-hundred-and-forty-four dollars and twenty-six cents.
Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd move to approve the resolution as read.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion on the resolution as read? Here no further discussion, can I get a vote, please?
David?
Aye.
Heather?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Next, action on fiscal year twenty-four audit.
So we just need approval on the audit that was presented tonight.
Any further discussion around the audit that was presented by his favorite?
Mr. Chairman, I'd move to approve the audit disposition with the board and the committee.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. I'll oppose, same sign. That's approved. Action on fiscal year twenty-five revised budget.
So again, this is just to approve what Julie had presented as this year's revised budget at this time.
Any further questions of Julie or Dr. Miller, or revised budget?
Would motion to approve the FY twenty-five revised budget as presented?
Motion made in second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose, same sign. Approved. Next up, report on early retirement incentive.
Yeah, so last spring, as we were looking at reductions, one of the ideas that came out was an early retirement incentive, and we were working on one with our lawyers and the teachers' union was working with their council, and it got to be so late in the year that we were unable to do one. So we started working on one for this year, and you know, we had proposed a one-year incentive that they would get extra bonus for one year if they were to retire early. There was stipulations that they still had to be fifty-five, working in our district for fifteen years and so forth. As the, as working with the union and as they started looking at the people that might qualify, I think they went and talked to some of those and started asking questions. In order for it to really be helpful for us and for them, you would definitely need several to take advantage of it. One of the things is that ones who are getting closer are probably more like three years out, two or three years out, so the one year really didn't help them, and they came back and asked about what we do three years. Now that spreads everything out, and it ended up being more money over the three years. And so when I talked with Julie and Dan about it, it just, sometimes you really don't get the benefits that you think you're going to have, and then when you spread out over three years, it really does not, not help and so forth. At this time, it's not that we won't do it if there has to be reduction for future years because now they're a little bit closer, and maybe you can entice them a year or two out, but at this time, we, I just want to let you know that the plan is, unless you tell me different, the plan is not to go out and do an early retirement incentive for this year. We have, right now, we just know, we know one that's put in for retirement at the end of the year. There may be one or two more, but that means we would offer to everybody if we were to put it out there now, and there's only one or two that we're kind of giving them some extra money who's already retiring. And so we just have to be smart about that as well, and we're kind of holding off on the early retirement incentive, and we'll look at it if we have to in future years as people get closer, we get older, as our staff gets older, you know, so.
Any questions? Thank you. Next, action on NYC twenty-twenty-six out of state trip.
Yes, we have Katie here as our enquirer director, and I asked her to be here, and she offered, she just wanted to have a seat there, and you can kind of explain.
So just my candy cane. Just thought I'd clear that up, just why I look like that.
So.
You look comfortable.
So this is just my formal proposal. I started doing choir trips in twenty-nineteen, and on every other year basis, they're open to anybody that participates in the class choirs. So we went to Chicago in twenty-nineteen. We were supposed to go to New York in twenty-one, and that got pushed back to twenty-two. I did propose a trip to New Orleans in twenty-four, but it ended up conflicting with a Spanish Department trip to Spain, and so we didn't have the enrollment to run that trip. But I'm just on an every other year basis, we've had that kind of, it's in writing on a different document, that it would be, I've moved to even number of years now since COVID. We're planning to redo pretty much the same trip that we did in twenty-twenty-two, so this would be four years separate, so it's a totally different batch of students in the high school, and the goal is to run that, the New York trip every four years, so everyone gets a chance to go to New York once in their time in high school. It's their enquire for the years that the trips happen. We do things like go to Broadway shows, we visit the nine-eleven memorial, we do the Statue of Liberty Ellis Island, we get backstage tour of the Radio City Hall where the Rockettes, where the Rockettes perform, and there's a, almost a hundred-year-old hydraulic system that runs that stage, which is really cool to see from the back view from backstage. We spend time in Times Square. We just kind of get a general-like tour of the entire city, and it's really a nice way to be able to just expose our Byron, Minnesota, small-town students to a different part of the world. This trip is, like I said, four years different from the last time. It is a bit more money than I wish it was, but everything has gone up. I know even my daughters, I have daughters that are two years apart, and the DC trip went up five-hundred dollars between those two years. So this has gone up. It is, one big difference this time around is that this is a, we're going to fly there rather than take a bus, and part of that's because New York City has really cracked down on bus ticketing and the way that they don't allow just any old bus driver downtown, and they don't allow them to idle and things like that, and so Midwestern bus companies are basically refusing to drive in the city anymore. So what we would do if we bust is we would take, let's say Rochester City Line, we'd drive there, and then we'd pay for our Rochester City Line driver and bus to sit in New Jersey while we were in New York for three or four days, and then just pay for them to sit at the hotel and wait for us to drive us back home and have to hire a different company to take us around town. So it ends up only being a couple hundred dollars difference, so due to just, you know, time factors and the nuisance of that. And then also our tour company that I go with, in the last few trips that they've gone, they've actually stayed in Times Square rather than staying in New Jersey and driving back and forth every day. So by flying, we're going to be able to utilize subway and get that experience as well and stay right in downtown, right in Times Square, and just really get that feel for the city and get to see it at night and things like that. So the itinerary is linked for, you know, if you guys need to look at it, the inclusions with the meals that are included, and those things are on there. I think I linked that somewhere else down lower. So there's the inclusions link, that blue one right there. The additional cost right there is because what's not included in the proposal from the tour company is getting us to the airport. So I worked with Val to figure out how much that would cost, and that's what that number is, it's like a twelve-hundred-something dollar. It worked out to about twenty-five dollars a participant, based on a fifty-person It's based on a fifty-person, uh, trip. And so I would just add that into the, the cost just to help, um, get us to and from the airport. So, um, there's not a cost to the district for this trip. Um, any additional funds? At one point on this policy six-ten, it asks how are you going to fundraise? Um, we do an annual fundraiser for Driven Coffee at the, with the high school. I maintain a spreadsheet with all the students balances. And then I have, um, the school cut the, cut a check with all of the, um, participants and their amounts itemized. And then that goes toward the tour company and that offsets those people that have participated in the fundraiser. Um, it offsets their balances. Um, and then I said that, you know, if there's a one question also that says how are you going to help students that are economically disadvantaged also have an opportunity? Um, and I said we could pay for twenty-five percent of one person's trip based on my general choir fundraising account. And I don't know exactly how we would go through that process, but that was something that we had in the assignment we didn't do before.
Katie has advertised the fundraising. Is that just word of mouth through the buzz?
Advertise the fundraising? You mean like for the students?
Yes, yeah.
Uh, it is, the students choose to participate. So if they choose to participate, it's their job. It's like a door-to-door sales situation. So and it's all independent, like if you go out and sell two hundred dollars, you're going to get forty percent of the two hundred dollars. So it doesn't go towards other people. It's really like I did the work, I get the money from it. So that's how that works. And then I, you know, as seniors graduate and there's a little bit left over, um, that rolls into my general funds, so.
Do you have minimums that you need to have to be able to go and do this?
It is a, I, he did two different prices. He did it based on a forty, he being my tour manager person. Um, he did it based on a forty participant and a fifty participant pricing. Um, I think when you go lower than, much lower than forty, and that includes parents and students' parents that are invited to participate as well.
What level of interest do you have right now?
Um, lots of people say they want to, so I can't officially like get anyone to sign up until we're officially approved. So, uh, I won't know until, until I start. And then, I mean, if we were to get people to start, start signing up and put down a deposit if the trip gets canceled due to low enrollment, everyone gets their money back, so.
Would you consider cooperating with another school if another one wanted to go? If you have enough numbers or?
Um, I have, I, I have talked to the cast and directors about that. They do their, theirs a little bit differently because they do competitions every time they travel and they go band and choir. I have talked with our band director and he's not interested in tours. Um, so I mean, it's, I, I would be open to it. I don't know if there's anyone that it would work well with right now, but.
Any other questions? Thank you.
So we just need to approve that.
I would make a motion to approve the New York City twenty-twenty-six out-of-state trip as presented.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any other discussion by the board? No? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side? Alright, approved. Thank you. Alright, Kerry's gone tonight, so I don't think there's a Z up to you unless you have anything.
No, I don't have anything.
Okay. Uh, moving on, city council update.
City council update. Pull it up here. So they did a vote to keep the tax rate study, um, steady. The tax rate is actually lower than many other area cities similar in size. And it's obviously your house, um, your home value that determines your property taxes. So when your value goes up, so do your taxes. So they were happy to keep it stable in light of the fact that we'll probably go out for a referendum again. Short and sweet.
Thank you. Is there anything on the consent agenda you would have liked to discuss? And, uh, entertain a motion regarding the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda as positioned with the board and the committee.
Second.
Motion made in second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same side? Alright, on to donations.
Alright, so from the Rochester Mount Forest, we had five hundred dollars for a choir fundraiser. Harvey Byrd gave two hundred dollars for the Bearcats. And also Harvey gave a hundred and fifty dollars for the food pantry and community closets. Thank you, Harvey.
Entertain a motion regarding the donations.
I move to approve the donations as read.
Motion made in second. Approve donations as read. Any further discussion? Here go further discussion. Can I get a roll call vote?
Jeremy.
Aye.
Dwayne.
Aye.
Lisa.
Aye.
Heather.
Aye.
Matt.
Aye.
Aye.
Moving on, uh, January sixth board retreat organizational meeting.
Yes, so I just want to, uh, inform those that are staying and let the community know that, uh, January sixth, we will be having a board retreat in the afternoon, starting at two o'clock. Um, and then we have our organizational meeting with the new board members, uh, starting at five o'clock that evening. And then there will be a regular board meeting, a work session type board meeting at six o'clock, uh, on January sixth. So that'll be the first time that the new board members, um, well, the new board for the next two years will be together. And, um, so we're excited to have that and get people off to a, a great start. So just wanted to let the community know that that's what we'll be happy on that day. Because of that, we, there won't be a listening session, like we usually have for the half hour before, um, that meeting. Um, just because the board members will be in, in their group probably until four thirty or so. And then, um, they'll be at the district office and then they will be coming over here for the organization meeting at, um, five o'clock. And then we'll have the regular meeting afterwards, so that's how January sixth will happen, so.
Any questions during January sixth? Moving on, recognition of departing board members?
Yes, I don't have anything in writing, but, uh, two, two years ago, when we, uh, had, uh, elections, you remember because of the previous years before that, we had people resign. And so we had six of seven positions open on the board and, uh, people answered the call and, and came on. And so we have a couple people who were on a two-year term who are now leaving the board. And so I wanted to, uh, recognize them at this time and thank them for their service. And, uh, I think they came on wanting to, one, maybe see what it was like. Two, really get back to the community and thought maybe this two-year deal will be okay and so forth. But they, uh, were moving, are moving on to other things and trying other things. So we really appreciate their service, their time, especially the last year, as you know, for, for our community, our school community and our board has not been easy. So I really do appreciate their, their leadership at this time. And, um, and so I have something to give for, for Heather Holmes. And, and Dwayne, who took over board chair this year. Thank you for doing that. And then I also want to make a, a special, uh, thank you to Matt Priggy. I put in the buzz last week that he was, he's on the board for twenty years, uh, been on the board for twenty years. And then I looked back at my notes and last year during the MSBA conference, he was recognized for his twentieth year. So he's actually his twenty-first year of serving on the board. Um, and so he said it's about what, a third, you said of your?
Third of my life.
A third of your life he's been on the board, so woo-hoo, you know, good for, and, uh, but I want to thank him for all of his work, his care for the community, um, giving back the hours upon hours and all the emails upon emails and phone calls. And so I want to thank him for doing that and being part of this, um, and, and retiring from, from the board. I think, unless he's going to come back in a couple of years, but I don't think. His wife's back there saying, no way, no way. Otherwise, if he says he's, if he's running, he may go missing. But I do want to thank you also, Matt, for all of your work and, uh, for what you've done for our community and for everybody here. So thank you very much. I appreciate it. Any, anything else from the board members that are staying?
I just, uh, you know, Dwayne and Heather, it's been a couple of years, but Matt has, I think, truly taken me under his wing and been available for advice, uh, good or bad and, and, uh, helped me look at things a different way. And then I know Matt will still be available to, to all of us and, for a quick call, nothing more than a quick call. Um, but really appreciate just being and meeting with you, Matt, and, and listening to the questions that you ask and, and it's helped me grow and, and learn the aspect. And still have a lot to learn, but I just wanted to personally say thank you.
Thank you. I've got some comments to share if nobody else has got anything else to share.
Well, I have the last thing. We have on our agenda before adjournment is retired board member's shared thoughts and experience.
I'll go last unless anybody else.
Yep, I just, it's been a, it's been a journey for the last year or so, two years really. Last year's been a lot. Um, it's been fantastic to serve the community. I look forward to continuing to serve the community in other ways. So this isn't goodbye. This is moving on to something different. Um, that started and I'm excited to see where that goes to.
Yeah, Sam kind of got into this, not really, you know, totally knowing what to expect. Um, overall, it's been a good experience. This year has definitely been challenging stuff that none of us expected to have to deal with. Um, I agree. It's great giving back to the community and trying to help serve our staff because they do a fantastic job. And, you know, most of you know I ran for office, that's why I wasn't able to continue on in this position. Hopefully still be involved in our community and help out. And, and Matt, I also appreciated your insight, you know, your experience, like when you, especially when you start. It's like you don't know what you don't know. So sometimes you don't even know what questions to ask and you were always really good, but, so. Appreciate your insight, Matt, too.
Well, I've got a few pages to share. I wish I had PowerPoints to share, but, uh, I don't. My apologies in advance. I'm going to read this because if I had to do it from memory, I'd probably start crying, so. Culture is not what you say, it is what you allow. What is our culture here in Byron? Has it changed for better or for worse? This story comes from any school in America. I want to point out the importance of role models, character and culture and the impact on lives. A mother passes away at age thirty-six from cancer and leaves three kids behind. One is a boy in fourth grade. She was diagnosed in August and gone in January. School was an opportunity for the boy to escape the void left at home. Role models like the lunch lady, we'll call her Grace, or a teacher from a previous grade playing horse, call her Mellerg Mary Ellen during recess, help ease the pain of the loss. Later, other teachers would also have an influence in science, English and accounting. People that were kind, well-educated and nurturing and had values that were second to none. They were, one could imagine were the character of six of a person that once was here and now gone. Other role models came along, but not as influential as a single father that was toileted home on a farm to keep providing for his motherless family. A high school ag instructor, a guidance counselor, basketball and football track coaches, all had an influence in shaping the character and the future of this young man by pushing him to expand his thinking and moving him along his journey. Years later, he returned to his community and was looking to pay back the efforts of others. He was contacted by an old coach and teacher to come into the classroom to teach junior achievement. At the class one day, the teacher and the two men were brought in for discussion, talking about the impact of positive male role models in lower grades due to the increased divorce rate in the country. It was just another example of the value of a school and the role it can play in helping students thrive in a way that's not always educational. Teachers do more than teach. As time passed, his children attended the same school that he had. The oldest had developed depression in middle school due to low iron levels and was put on Prozac by the doctors. Unknown was the impact of a genetic issue that put the student in the path of suicide from their prescribed medication. Were it not for an attentive teacher who knew the student well, the plan might have succeeded. Only by the help of the teacher who knew the signs of death was prevented. Another example of the influence of a teacher. The student from that time on worked to stand up for those who needed someone to advocate for them, even if it was a teacher that was later, uh, exited the district with the acceptance of a resignation by the board. When the girl turned sixteen, it was a happy day it seemed, until she got home from school. After getting a driver's license and checking out the PSEO opportunities at a local community college, she returned to her home high school. Previously, a counselor informed that she was not the best candidate and she wasn't in the top third of her class. This day, her friends turned on her, telling her that she wasn't smart enough to graduate from the local school and others saying that she should have committed suicide back in middle school. The daughter never wanted to set foot in that school again. She did her high school career at the junior college and received her associate degree before her high school diploma. In college, she was recognized as the outstanding undergraduate in her field. This is, uh, was followed by obtaining a master's degree at the number one institution, social work, and beginning a PhD program in education. Her grit and determination to prove others wrong had been a driving force in providing the impetus to have a broader platform to advocate for others. I know this story well. I've lived it. This is my life. I tell this story because I know what a difference that schools can have on a life. It can propel a passion for learning and it can save a life. I'm concerned that we're at a pivot point here in Byron. I've spent over one-third of my life, twenty-one-plus years on the Byron School Board. Most of it's been very fulfilling, most of it. I ran this last time in twenty-twenty after the outbreak of COVID because of a growing concern that community members and staff wanted to get rid of our superintendent because of a difference of opinion over mask mandates and the budget adjustments that he also faced in trying to get a fund balance back up to the board budget. I consulted with a trusted friend in our district. Her comments about, uh, being concerned that she could be fired for violating a six-foot social distancing mandate if she gave a hug to a student that desperately needed one led me to believe that I could make a difference. She also informed me that there were teachers that were writing their obituaries because they were concerned about contracting COVID. It was not a good situation. My write-in campaign then stated, "We currently face some daunting challenges. Financial health of our state and school, COVID-nineteen, increased social unrest, psychological well-being and more." I was concerned that some bad things could happen. Since then, I observed a small group of people that have used tools and tactics of Saul Alinsky to attack and ridicule our board and administrators over a difference of opinion and how to operate and govern a school against the decisions of those elected to set the policies. Since twenty-twenty-one, I have witnessed the following. Our previous superintendent left after threats, tires being slashed and some threatening a no vote of confidence. Two board members resigned, one citing that the duties of the school board were negatively impacting mental and physical well-being. The other stated the real estate business they owned was in financial downturn because community members that didn't agree with the masking decision on the school agents or organization, uh, or the school organized to not do listings, bookings or showings with that agency. A replacement board member was contested because of an old posting by their spouse on a deleted Facebook account and labeled them as potential homophobes. Media being contacted to ridicule a boarded administration over enforcing an existing rule that, uh, well, what can be done on school grounds, our Ukrainian flag issue. I later found out that the reason was more about a concern that the board was impeding on freedom of speech of students and teachers and a genuine concern for the plight of those in Ukraine. There was a time when we contacted the media to celebrate a national blue ribbon award or being a finalist in the Malcolm Baldrige Award. Now we call it era dirty laundry and the media comes in droves. More recently, the ridicule and harassment of our current superintendent, board chair and other board members from our current financial issues, including again, a threat of no confidence vote by the union. Freedom of information requests that have cost the district over ten thousand dollars through the end of October in legal fees. This is money better spent, or saving teacher positions than trying to prove a conspiracy that does not exist. Our current situation could and should have been avoided through numerous ways, but it was not. Personal accountability, myself included, by all members in the district and the community, could have made this all go differently, but we failed in the short term. Some have stated that a more experienced board or superintendent would have prevented this from happening. I cannot say one way or another, but having more time in the seats gives you more life experiences and context to make decisions. Public and social media attacks that destabilize a board and administration when they make decisions that are unpopular some does not help with the attainment of longevity and needed experiences to affect government long-term. An effective vote yes campaign could have been the difference in the operating levy. It appeared that no effective vote yes campaign resulted and the board and administration was blamed, even though it's illegal to fund a vote yes campaign with district funds. It's a conflict of interest. Now we have staff with less seniority that are at risk of being cut to make a financial number. Why wasn't there a campaign? I don't know. Since twenty thirteen, our homeschool population has doubled and our open enrollment out of the district has more than tripled. What needs are we as a community and district not fulfilling? If we were appealing to those two hundred and four students, it would have meant an additional two million dollars in revenue in twenty-three and twenty-four school year. What are we missing? Do homeschool parents disagree with mandates or a lack thereof? Uh, or curriculum and sex education class contests? Are some of the PSEO students looking to escape a bullying situation? I don't know the answers, but it bears investigating. The day after election, I was returning an election banner to one of our newly elected board members that I put up. After dropping it off, I decided to take a short drive into an area of Byron that I had never driven before. After driving through the cul-de-sac, I waved to a. After driving through the cul-de-sac, I waved to a group of walkers on the sidewalk, one of which I knew. The next day, I was teched as by this individual who wanted to talk about the current school situation. The initial conversation started out by informing that I was going to be personally liable for the negligent manner the district was run, that I should not be protecting the superintendent, that jail time was likely for some. At the end of the conversation, I was asked, "What were you doing in my neighborhood yesterday? You don't belong there." That was creepy. In my life, I have never felt like someone was looking at me as a second-class citizen just for driving through a neighborhood that I had once considered living in. How are people made to feel that we don't know in this town? Our community needs to decide what the culture of our district is going to be going forward. I'm concerned that if we have people leading this district, either internally or externally, that have a personal agenda, that it will not be good for our school or our community. When the board received an email from a local resident during COVID about the bond referendum back in twenty-twenty-one that stated, "You messed up the masking mandate, good luck getting money from the smartest, as wealthy as people in Byron," I felt that something in Byron had changed. People that claim to support the schools were putting their own interests ahead of that of the district, of the students in the district. This was further emphasized during one of the Freedom of Information Act requests when we found out that a newly elected member of the board emailed Dr. Numak. From the text request, it was revealed that even though the individual knew that the district needed an operating levy, they would lead the vote no campaign until he resigned. Critical thinkers need to be aware of their own biases and do what is needed despite their own beliefs to do what is right for the community and the district. We are at a turning point in Byron. What do we want our culture to be going forward? It's not what we say, but it's what we allow. It's what we have currently gone through, the type of home that our students want and what they deserve. I appreciate your time. Thank you very much. It's been a pleasure being on this board.
Thanks, Matt. I appreciate you sharing your story. Thank you for the two, spending a thirty-year life here. It's a long time. With that, the last item on our agenda is adjournment.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Motion made in second, you get it, sure? All in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed same sign? We're adjourned.